This conference will now be recorded.
Are we ready? Got everybody?
Yes, Matt online.
Everyone. Hey, Mr. Matt. All right, good evening. Here by call to order, this meeting of the Coos County Planning Commission. I'm Joe Aguirre, Chairperson of the Planning Commission. Would like at this time, all the other commissioners to go ahead and introduce themselves. Let's start in person and then we'll go online.
Ty Gergen, Coos Bay.
Reanna Chou.
I'm who calls Coos Bay.
Once again, Joe Aguirre, Coos Bay. Online.
Matthew Orderstrous, Coos Bay.
Joanne Hanson.
And I believe we got Joanne Hanson online as well. Okay, thank you very much, Commissioners. At this time, we'd like to take a brief public comment, just for items that do not pertain to the current agenda. Is there anybody wishing to speak? Do we have anybody that wants to speak on anything not on the agenda today? Seeing and hearing none?
I just like one question.
Surely.
I've never gotten a mail. President of the North Bank Lane. Is this anything that affects my property or any of my...
North Bank Lane? Probably not. If you're abandoned Cranberry Farmer or something like that, maybe, but that's... It has to do with beaches and dunes overlays, so have to be... Yeah, we'd have to know your specific property address probably to answer that, but Jill, what do you think?
I don't think they're typically around the ocean area. South Abandon, the affected, and city of the Soppers Lake.
Yeah, did you catch that? So it's like South Abandon, Dune Valley, and down.
I have...
Yeah. Notes just went out to everybody in the affected areas?
Yeah, I sent out south.
Yeah, so if you weren't in one of the 4,000, there's a good chance you are not, your property is not affected by these. However, feel free and sit around and join us. Yeah? Okay, then, moving forward. Oops.
One, I got to open up my... See what zoning to... No, no, no. Don't be worried about how much map we see much changes you've been...
Hence, hence the good turnout. No, it's not really zoning changes, by the way. This is text amendments. So, yeah, surprised that link didn't work, maybe.
So can you open it up so that we can see? I think that we got like a bit of a question, so like we did last night. So we kind of hold on, we can look at that. Otherwise, we're just gonna have a crowd of people looking at properties for a copy and get started.
Yeah, yeah, it's not... Yeah, your property may or may not even be included. That's the tricky part. So you really almost have to listen to presentation and then we can take a look and take stock of who actually is in that geological... It's about geological hazard zones, basically. Yeah, it's not floodplain. Nope, not floodplain. It's beaches and dunes. So it's like, does any of your property say, like a big sand dune? Then you're probably not involved. But, but, right, because, yeah, you could be in there. Yeah, yeah, like I said, Cranberry Farmer, you definitely want to be here, but...
The huge theory. What effects? So if it was any change, I want to add...
One more question. I'm hearing these commissioners, where's God fail, fail or...
You're confusing the county commissioners with planning commission. So we are an advisory mostly committee that gives advice to the county commissioners, which make the final decision. Let's go ahead and tee up our presentation and then if you guys have questions after the presentation, we'll have you fill out comment cards. And then we can get your address, name, phone number, get it done the legislative way. We got to really follow Robert's rules of order here, otherwise we're getting real derailed quickly. So let's do the presentation, get that out of the way, and then we will have some time for each and every one of you to come up and make comments based on what you heard. Sound right? Okay, then, moving forward, and let's go, let's go ahead and just hear on these, on this proposed text amendments here. We had minutes to approve first?
Yeah.
Do you have minutes?
That event from our last August meeting. Okay, let's go ahead and see, has each staff member received a copy of the minutes and had a chance to review them?
Yes.
Me as well. Comments, questions, concerns? I entertain a motion.
I so moved to approve the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minute for the August. All in favor? Aye. Hearing none, so moved. Thank you, sir. Okay, easy to get rid of the minutes on the last ones. And then, proceed, you want to do the hearing procedures, does that apply?
Yeah, you just need to confirm that ready to review your staff report.
Very good. And have you guys all got your staff report on this item, item agenda, eh?
So I'm John.
Yes.
Mr. Recker. Lanyz procedure... Development Order, question 5.7.300, ORS 197.63. The party may either represent themselves or be represented by an attorney, consultant for other non-attorney professionals may appear as faculty, but not legally representative party. Witnesses testifying on behalf of an organization must provide written documentation. They are authorized by that organization to appear and testify. Testimony and evidence must be directed to the identified criteria relating to the application or other criteria which you believe applies to the application. The issue which may be the basis for an appeal to the Lanyz Board of Appeals shall be raised no later than the close of the record on the filed evidence hearing on the proposal. Failure to raise an issue and prevent statements or evidence clearly in a manner sufficient to allow the planning commission or other parties an opportunity to respond will conclude and yield the Lanyz Board of Appeals. So tonight we have file, it's a text amendment AM dash 25 dash 005. The ordinance in this matter is 25 dash 08 dash 005 PL. It's a matter of amending section 4.11.129, the Beach and Dunes Policy, which is policy 5.10 of the Comprehension Plan. Of the Coos County Land Development Ordinance, amending volume 1, Part 1, Section 5.1, 0, and volume 1, Part 2, Section 3.8 of the Coos County Comprehensive Plan. So the Beach and Dunes update process and amendments, Coos County Comprehensive and zoning development ordinance are to bring the local policies into alignment with the best available client and statewide, and clients with state-wide triangle 18. The proposal adopts and updates the dune and hazard mapping prepared by Dogami and Department of Land Conservation and Development. This is found in the open file report VR dash 24 dash 13. The report covers and stands the years of 1975 through 2022 and replaces the 1975 original new classification maps that we had to guide the policy, which are nearly 50 years old. The key concepts to the proposal proposals include the new, new land formation classification and update hazard zones. A clear crosswalk from the dune formations to three categories for suitability. Suitable for most uses, limited suitability, and not suitable. These are the same classifications that were in place in 1975. However, the new mapping has changed which landforms are where, so there may be different criteria required, or you may actually be outside of the area. So established, there's also establishment of type 1 review for development in the areas that are suitable for most uses, including younger stabilized dunes and older stabilized dunes. Correcting the draft, I had to correct your draft table, staff report, page 8. It was supposed to say type 1, type 1, which is non-discretionary, gets highlighted in the page 8 of your staff report. It said type 2 with required initial needs, which is incorrect. You guys find that on page 8?
Okay.
On the table. So the table actually sets out the type of dune form, what type of review is required, and just provides you the information that corresponds with the map, so that you can look up the map and see what those designations are. Goal 18 also continues to prohibit certain development on active four dunes and deflation plains. That hasn't changed. You have to have an exception to have that development in that area. There are less of these areas. When we go to the PowerPoint, she'll show you what has been... And then certifications of exemptions for minor activities such as maintenance, utilities, small excavations, forest practices. There is a whole list of them on page, on page 9, and goes through page 10. No, certain page 11, I'm sorry. And point to the exemption, supposed to exempt certain site evaluation, subject repairs, wells, water systems, things that, you know, are accessory to actual structural development. So the overall purpose, purpose of this is to conserve and protect dune resources while allowing appropriate development. Risk to life and property in mapped hazard areas, provide clear and objective standards for needed housing consistent with ORS 197. Ensure consistency with structural building code requirements related to soil stability. So one of the differences is in the suitable for most areas, the plan pushed those requirements off the building side for soil stability instead of addressing them upfront. We chose to dress them upfront with the best management practices, so that you weren't addressing them like the back end of the review process. And actually gave you a lesser development. You're not required to have the geo-hazard report that you might have to have done.
That's for the, in the suitable for most use.
Yes. Yes. And so you also have some comments that just came in today. So I tried to put the best I could together some information, but I will guarantee that I did not hit every button to come in until later today. Sir Briner and Oregon Shore sent a letter, they actually support, but then they asked for some greater restrictions. I don't really recommend that you adopt any greater restrictions at this time without, because we just don't have that information available to you. You can recommend that the board consider those, if you're recommendation. There are also a couple of D restrictions that they talk about, but those are actually already covered in a different section for conditional uses, so it's not necessary to be redundant to think that bad. And then, Chris McWhorter from Pacific Geo Design, he provided you some comments also. There really isn't any changes I see, other than maybe just clarifying some farm practices in the exemption part of it. So we already clarified the board's practices, and you think you might want to just add if, like, clarify that farm practices inside.
What were, what were your thoughts on the strike through? What was staff's position on the strike through, including the site investigation report by a qualified geologist? Y'all have thoughts on that?
So, yeah. For shoving criteria onto the building side. So that was... The site investigation of a site management plan, and basically it just covers the erosion area, water runoff. And it's just control type soil, so that it doesn't impact neighbors' property when they're developing. And it also gives it away from the foundation, so it's not going to cause you foundation problems staying on. The comments that makes about the licensing, for the, sir, these are licensed professionals, they have boards that they actually answer to.
I think our question was more like, does it really add that additional layer of...
It's a...
...qualification, or is it just moving it?
It...
It's always required a geotek, right?
Well, not a geotek. It's necessary. It could have... So what we're doing is trying to move it to the front end, so that you know what the expectations we are on, and get stuff in that in the second half. So part of this is, you know, we didn't bring building on until 2022, so we were two separate agencies. So it was a little hard to manage what was required for on-site building and planning. So now we're trying to bring all that together and we're trying to include that in the plan, so that we're upfront. And we have all the information upfront through the Lanyz side of it. One thing we didn't do was make it a condition use, because we didn't want to add that additional burden of conditional use. We tried to make it clear and discretionary, so that it was easier to do the report, and then all the information would be there. And then there's like one, when you go to the building side, there's a report required from the professional state that you completed.
So like, here's an example of a pole bar. An HDU would not have required it under planning, but then as soon as you went to building, they would have triggered it.
It could.
Mostly.
Yeah.
I thought he was also referring to the error in the type 2 and that classification, too.
Oh, which we already corrected. It's table 8, 8.
Yeah.
Thanks. Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
So, Reanna, do you want to set up for a PowerPoint just to give an overview, especially about the mapping stuff? Because I think that's what people have most interested in.
Absolutely. If I could get sharing permissions, I can go ahead and get that started.
And Reanna's with the LCD. She did give us a presentation, she's already... This will be your search.
All right, let's see if I can get this going. Let me know if you can see that.
Yes.
Okay, I can, thank you. I can't see you, so if you have any questions, feel free to stop me as I go through this. Thank you, Commissioner Nurdus, for having me here this evening. My name is Reenan Bazzor. I'm the Coastal Shore Specialist with the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development, and I am the goal 18 technical expert. And so I've been working with Jill and Amy on this project, and I will go through some of the map updates that Jill has mentioned, and that helped inform a lot of the, the code updates as well. Okay. So statewide planning goal 18. Oops, sorry. Okay. Statewide planning goal 18 is, it covers beaches and dunes, and it has some pretty directive requirements and provisions. It guides the protection and development of beach and dune areas across the entire coast. Some of the main provisions include having prohibition areas for development. And so that is the exclusion of being able to build on high hazard areas, such as on the beaches and in active dune areas. It also calls for the preservation of dune vegetation, because that helps stabilize the dunes and can act as a protective barrier. It also provides requirements for dune grading, and so they can only happen in areas where there are adopted for dune management plans, apart from remedial grading. It also covers, and this is kind of one of the things that Goatine is most well-known for, it has limitations for beachfront protective structures, such as riprap or seawalls. And what we're here to talk about tonight is something that helps really inform all of those other provisions. And that is the requirement of having an inventory of beach and dune areas. And so all these inventories not only have to have a map of all of the different landforms, but they also need to describe the stability, the movement, groundwater resources, hazards, and values of the beaches and dunes within these beach and dune overlay zones. So most of the jurisdictions up and down the coast, apart from a few, and are still using maps from 1975 that were created to map all of these beach and dune inventories. And so as you can imagine, you know, I mean, these are really great in-depth maps, and they have lasted a very long time. But there has been a lot of changes, both in the landscape and in terms of development, public perception of, you know, where things should and shouldn't be built. And so these maps, we realized really needed to be updated, and it's a fairly large undertaking. And so we ended up doing a pilot project with the LCD and Dogami, the Department of Geologic and Mineral Industries, as well as Tillamook County a few years ago. And they ended up making new maps for Tillamook County. We created some model language for their beach and dune comprehensive land updates, and those went over really well for the county. Everybody was really happy with that. And so we ended up going on to secure funding to work with Dogami again, to create these maps for the entire rest of the coastal communities. And so as part of that project, we've been working with the Coos County, as well as the city of Banden, to make sure that these maps are reflective of what we're actually seeing on the ground today, which again, has changed a lot since 1975. We have been going through the different classifications, and then we also have been working on using that model code that was created and used in Tillamook to make sure that it was best suited for Coos County. And so there was a lot of back and forth on that, using these maps and going through the different classifications and, and seeing what may or may not need to be updated. And the report is available here online. Sorry, was there a question? Okay.
Proceed.
You can see in these maps here, I'm sorry.
It's fine. At the end of the presentation, sir, fill out a comment card, you'll have two minutes to speak. Please proceed.
Okay, thank you. On the left-hand side of these maps, of the 1975 maps, so this is just a comparison. On the left here, we have Banden, and so these, on the right-hand side of each of these are the new maps. On the right over here is for New River Spit. And we have the classifications, and you can see that, oh, there has been quite a good deal of change, both in the landscape. There have also been a couple of new classifications added for these new maps. So whereas the, the CT here was coastal terrace previously, that included older developed sand dunes. We now have that coastal terrace split into three different coastal terraces, and so that's reflective of the age of each of those. So the one closest to the shore would be the youngest, and then moving inward, so C, C, or sorry, CT, CT2, and then CT3. And we can see some changes, and this OS here is open sand, so it looks like that has decreased quite a bit over here. And same thing over here, we have the open sand again in that yellow, and that has been decreased quite a bit moving into 2024. So not only do these new maps show the new classifications and where those types of landscapes are found, it also, they completed a change analysis from 1970s to 2024. And so you can see on the pie chart on the right there, we have active four dunes in the kind of light tan beige color. And so you can see that that has increased over time, whereas open sand and the wet areas have decreased over time. Younger stabilized dunes have increased. So there have been definitely some shifting in where those landscapes and how abundant they are. We also have in that report, in that we used for the code updates as well, are these classifications from the inventory from 1975 compared to the new classifications. We tried to keep, or make sure that Dogami used classifications and codes that were in line with DLCD's classifications as well. And then you can see at the bottom here, some new classifications, including they added in lakes, ponds, rock studies, wetlands. Coastal landslides weren't in there before, and so that is really helpful for hazard areas, and then developed areas as well as a new category. All of this data is available, as Jill mentioned, on the Coos County All Hazards Viewer, and this is, can be accessed here. So it's under the Beach Dune Classification 2024 file layer here. So if you click that, and it has all of the different classifications, you can zoom into your specific location or address. And if you click on it, it'll be able to give you a little bit more information about not only that classification, but also what is eligible in that different, specific area. Also available on this All Hazards Viewer is the Development Suitability Layer Legend. So we have red for not suitable, yellow for limited suitability, and then green for suitable for most uses. And so you can overlay both of those layers with the beach and dune classification and the development suitability, if you're interested in seeing, comparing to the table in the code, to see what is eligible for, for which of those landscapes. So using that inventory, I mentioned that we had created some model language, so we used that as a basis, and then made sure that all county-specific needs were addressed. And Jill added in a really great section, as she mentioned, on site management plans, and that's something that we've been really excited about, and we're actually going to add to our model language to encourage other jurisdictions to use that as well. And that's something that Oregon Parks and Recs has been excited about as well. These updates reflect not only the new maps and the changing conditions overall, they also incorporate things like sea level rise and make sure that coastal hazards are taken to account for making sure that nothing is happening in those high hazard areas. They also reflect best practices for dune grading, limitations on armoring, and vegetation management as well. And then, as Jill mentioned, there are also new standards that are required for clear and objective standards, and so we incorporated those in through the geologic hazard reports and the type 1 and type 2 permit specifications. So with that, I will stop sharing and take any questions that anybody has.
Thank you very much. I would tell you, I love the new additions to the hazard map. Boy, that is so neat, being able to zoom right in your address and see if you're aware of where you're exactly lying in that. Commissioners, any comments or questions? Fantastic.
I have one question.
Yes.
Land that's along coast, nature is... Inspector install on all courses long. You could, I understand they swap land, wetland and wetland, do that? Correct?
There's definitely, yeah, it's...
What I'm after is when they swap... Bad land and zone beef. Is it, if it goes in land a little bit, it's wetland, is that... Have the rules?
Thank you, first to wetland mitigation, and wetland mitigation handled by the Department of State Land, so this layer has nothing to do with that.
Yeah, that doesn't necessarily apply. Yeah, and it, yeah, because that's, well, that's wetland mitigation, and normally, yes, that would, it would. You can't just take and trade wetlands for other wetlands and then go screw up the other wetlands, right? Yeah, yeah, so it's Department of State lands, but the answer, short answer, yes. Doesn't apply here, but...
Are you, have questions?
Yeah, what I'd like to do is, if you did have one, let's have you fill out a comment card, come to the table, state your name and address, just so we know where you're at. Let's do it the right way here. The cards are right here at the front desk, and that way you're on record, because this is all pretty formal stuff. Thank you, sir. Love your shirt. Yeah. I appreciate you. Yeah. So come on up, Randy. Yeah, well, he's, he's really supposed to come up. Come on up and introduce yourself and let's do this the right way. Then we can send you the right thing. You're on record.
Randy Harvick, 8995, Kier, Ohio.
Thanks, mister. Yeah.
Atlas.net, I should display like we all received, is a dead link. I don't, I don't know if I'm.
Yeah.
I can't pull it up. I can't see the map that you showed. Because it's, it's miniscule. Back there.
Yeah, you gotta be able to pull that up. And I would say, I use that map every single day for my job. So, but, but you've got to be able to get to it. I agree, absolutely. So let's give these guys all a link to that. That works.
Well, number two, why don't we see, wait, we get the presentation.
You can. No problem. It's online. Yeah.
Three. A lot of people, with the exceptions.
Yeah.
It's also online.
Yeah, you've got to. And so it's tough because, yeah, as the average layperson, it is tricky to navigate. Don't, don't trust me. This is the only reason I do this. But so you, from the map and go to the table.
I can.
Yeah, we can get it on the phone. I'll help you.
Atlas.net is dead, right here.
I'll get you. Yeah, we can get you. The map, the map is very live and works really good, but you gotta like. Yeah. URL. Yeah, that URL. Yeah, that's what you gotta do. Yeah. Yeah, but once you got it in your web browser, then you can just keep linking back to it.
She sent out 4,000 invites.
Yeah.
Can we get the FOL?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, well, and it's even one more bouncing ball further, because then you have to go to the map. Then you, once you go to the map, then you have to go to the use table. And you have to be able to use the legend too. It's, oh, it's tricky. I'm not gonna lie. Oh, I do it for a living and it's very tricky.
Does he have his email in there?
No, I'll put it. But you gotta get the map, otherwise you don't know what you're looking at. Absolutely.
See, it's right here.
Yeah, no problem. We'll get you. Must have linked.
What's your address? Like, can you look it up right now?
And I bet you 90% of you, it doesn't apply. It's.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, you definitely. Yeah. Oh, good. She brought her card. Yeah.
So it also says, take over our website. If you go to our website.
That's how I always access the map. So listen to this. You go to cooswworassessor, blah, blah, blah. And once you get on the county website, then. Community Development. There's tabs. If you bring up, it can show you how to get there right on our website if you want to. And that's the way I always access the page, by bringing up Googling Coos County. And then, and then following the county website. And you can get right there. And not only is it this map, it's 100 great maps that'll show you all about how this all works. Oh, it's fantastic. You can map waterline right here. Oh, yeah. Yeah, usually go to Departments, Community Development, and then, and then Maps and More.
So there are several ways to get to this. You have to be patient.
It's definitely a little tricky. You want to show them all? We can maybe take email addresses and just email people links.
You can also Google Coos All Hazards and it's one of the top two buttons.
Coos All Hazards, got you right there. Yeah. I think that's right. Coos Hazard Map. Yeah, Coos Hazard Map, it was the very first lane. That's everything. And then on the left. Yeah, it's everything. Flood zone, slide, earthquake, tsunami, beaches and dunes, like we're talking about today. Yeah. It's all of it. It even tells you like how much acres your neighbor had, all of it. Every single thing you could ever want to know about Coos County is on this one map. And then you just click the little clicks on the side for what boxes you want, whether you want that zoning for your property or the hazard overlay or the whatever like thing you want to look at. That's also online. That one, for that one, you just Google. I get it. It's. But the website's pretty intuitive. You just need to. Yeah, so like, say you just go to coo.co.coos.or.us, which is our main website for our page. It's right under like probably latest news. Yeah, public hearing.
So if you, if you go into www.co.co or dot us, then you're going to select under Department, Community Development. You expand the land use program and then expand submitted applications, like application 2025. And then it's the amendment reasons.
I'll sit down with you on your phone afterwards if you want, mister, and tell you what I'm doing.
And it has an entire page. You want it?
I got it. Bookmarked.
Including the brochure, the PowerPoint presentation, the file report, the language, the standing board, the org event.
Yeah. Okay, so what we'll do, folks, is let's go ahead and anybody that wants a link to the map and or the presentation, let's get everybody's email addresses written down and then we'll send y'all a link to that, okay? And that way everybody can know what the heck we're even talking about here. In the meantime, I've had the opportunity for Ken Howe to go ahead and submit. Why don't you come on up, Ken? And if anything, it's your thoughts, folks, for your living. Take some time and tell us your thoughts.
Okay, my name is Ken Howe. I live on.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Yeah, Ken Howe. I live at 86200 miles down. Now, my property stands all the way across to basically to the beach. Okay. Are they going to be putting more restrictions on us in regards to, to our access to it?
Potentially, if, if, well, yeah, access, what do you mean by access?
I can't walk to the beach anymore, or haven't been able to since I moved.
Don't let the supplies to access. This is more like development. This is more like if you want to build a pool building on the dune in front of your house. That.
No, I did. Was, it was there. It was there, but I didn't put another building. Yeah, I did.
Okay, but access.
To. To the dune.
Yeah, I don't believe this has anything to do with access.
Stage or species.
Yeah, we don't govern over that. That's out of our jurisdiction.
The vegetation, the dunes and everything. You know, they're talking about vegetation. Who's going to take care of the gorse itself? Yeah, and that's, and it's getting worse and worse over here. Realize that. And for an invasive species, the beach grass is an invasive species. Not supposed to be there. It's open, the open sand areas are getting smaller and smaller all the time.
Yeah, that's.
With all the, all the different things.
Yeah, you're, you're a proponent to this, it sounds like, because that's what this is trying to protect, is really get that ecosystem back to where it's supposed to be and try to get that development.
My, my other hat.
Sure.
So we ended up with an issue with Oregon Parks. They had some issues with us treating the gorus because of these daylighting of love. And I don't know, Rea, you want to talk a little bit about that and the process and the, the conversations that you had? That we have had this issue come up. They had this conversation. There has got to be a better way to control it. This is out of control with the fire hazard. Things taking up. How was that? I completely agree with them.
Me too. But there's that fine line between, yeah, destabilizing the shoulders, the coastal boundaries and removing that invasive species. Sure. And it's beyond that. Sure.
It's kind of above and beyond what we're doing.
But don't think your words fall on deaf ears. I think we're all in agreement with what you're saying. Yeah, that doesn't have what we're doing today. Nothing with access. It's about, it's about development.
It's just about. Yeah.
They used to, they used to do it with a snowy fucker, but they level out the dune. And then the next year, they'd have to either do it again.
Yeah.
Or forget about it. Beach grass takes it, takes it back over.
But I think you make a good point that we probably should try to figure out some way if we can get rid of it. And under your noxious weeds, if we can figure out some way to mitigate gorse removal versus destabilization of the dunes that you're. Leave saying.
Speaking of, speaking about that, if you walk along whiskey run, you can see where the gorse was. It's coming down the hill. And the only reason why the weight that gorse in the, it's not stabilizing, it's not stabilizing anything. So.
Yeah, it's more.
If it was grass, it would be better.
Yeah.
So done.
Thanks, thanks, Ken. Appreciate the comment, sir. No, you're. Yep, you are certainly right, sir. Okay, that was fantastic information. Any other public comments? Anybody else want to fill out a card and come up and say a piece? Happy to hear. Thanks, sir. I'll take that one. Oh, when you're in.
Clover nesting here in the tunnels.
Yes.
Yeah, so you can go on the beach with those clover insects.
You just stay right up there, Mr. Mike. You officially have the mic. Mike has the mic.
Excuse me, can we keep the comments down and back, please, if we can't hear the speaker up front?
Process, building, but my, the feeling I got from the conversation was that if I would build and then in the future, we want to do something else, that I would have to do another condition use permit. And then future building would be again subject to the goal and standards that you guys just described. So my question is, make it simple question. If Mr. Howe was going to decide to build and we're going to mitigate on his property, his conditional use permit for the structures that are there has already been done. So he would have to apply for a new conditional use permit to build a new rock, right?
I'll let Jill answer that, but I believe the information is, yeah.
If it is.
He would have to do, at the GeoHazard Report, they can amend the GeoHazard Report. It's not, it's not a full hazard report. So a lot of times we reach out to who did the hazard report before, explain the situation. They'll update it and we'll go through the process. It really depends on what your conditional use covered to begin with. So a lot of times we have people that come in and they do a conditional use and do the GeoTech Report, then they decide they don't want to build and then it's past the five years. And it is five years.
Yep, that's true.
That it's good for. You should have had one firm in your, in your condition. Yes, so.
So it's only.
Yes, it is. But you can update it and ask for an extension to it. So we just have to.
All of the stuff that you guys described about the site plan, the vegetation, the type 2 review requires a professional to do this, which all costs money. And this is a big problem. I have with this, is that it's costing the man to to comply with all this, including, there's a sentence in your proposal legislation that says if the planning department doesn't understand the geological issues involved, that the applicant has to pay for the consultant they need hired to explain to your staff what's on the issue. It just seems to me like this is incredibly humorous on the land management. Almost taking your rights to do all. I think it's. Read that 30-page piece of legislation. I'd read it at least three times. So it comes back to me, I, in the picture, it sounds like I will have to comply. I want to have multiple structures built over ten years on my property. Every time I go for a conditional use permit in the beach, I'm going to be stopped with the goal of seeing requirements for type 2 review, or anything that I forgot, following the entity for building my house, right? In five years, I'll have to go through goal 18.
Yeah, correct. That seems like. Right, you have to. Well, no, you already did. You successfully navigated goal 18.
Even if women adopted some five-year, six-year, you waited, you'd have to do a new before you could build.
Right, but the goal 18 standard is very more.
They're not. They really aren't. It does require the GeoTech to do the report. It requires the GeoTech to do the report now.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, you had, you had to hire a GeoTech to get your, you had to hire a GeoTech, right?
You just described the issue that in fact, it's more than that, because now you have a report that's done by necessarily GeoTech, by geologists, but you already got somebody to be run off control, the vegetation plan.
That's, that's all included in your current reports, the way you cover this.
Yeah, that, that is.
The downgrade. Just need to address that and don't need a full hazard report. You've separated out that criteria. That criteria is already in there. If you read your view, have a report. They've already done the foundation, they've done water runoff, and they've addressed it all.
Yeah, they've done grasses and vegetation and all that was already in your GeoTech. Do you? I, I read, I read the GeoTech's all day. That's what I do. Yeah. I read a lot of it. So it should be in there. If it wasn't, at least the staff wouldn't have approved. So normally that would be what's already. Different.
But I'm still not convinced, though, that, that in the future, for people like you, that, that we don't have to go. Sounds like we're no longer.
Goal 18 requires you to go through it currently and it requires you to go through it in the future. Or it's going to change. It doesn't matter.
Yeah, it seems almost like you're the perfect case in point to say, we're already doing exactly this thing. We're simply reclassifying some of the soils, those types of dunes, so that they require some addition or maybe even some less, because the dune state has changed since 1975. Because the dune state has changed since nineteen seventy five.
You're not doing grading. You have to be doing grading together in the tree.
Yeah, yeah, you, that's, that's what Brandon Dean's Phil McGough person and stuff mostly.
But you moved it to put a structure on it, correct? We didn't just allow to grade the dune. That's to grade the dune.
Right.
That's site preparation.
Yeah, that, that's included in site prep, not that, uh, grade the dune grade.
You know, I, I know that other people probably have questions. You can see that, that we're not in this process that occurred, we're not getting. I did even get the part in the mail of after the first August seven meetings were, which were galvanized starting from state to transportation, originally, it includes whole things. The two, the third page, like, like I said, it's really hard to like a bad computer program, they were, if it's this, then it's this. This type of thing, this one, it's not, it's two.
Sure.
You have multiple copies of this, you can actually move back and forth. I don't feel really good with it.
Yeah.
I don't feel, I think I'm doing it. That this isn't going to come back in the future.
So you had a geo tech report done with your initial use about a year ago?
Yeah.
Year and a half. And then you have other plans, you have plans, you want to build other structures on your property. Okay. So you can go back to the geo tech firm. Kind of a master plan?
There are a lot of it's.
Yeah. Right now, I would just be creative, come up with everything you might want to do and cover it and update the plan every five years. Hopefully in that regard, but hopefully it's.
Yeah.
My, my guy retired on me too. Yeah, right, but it's cheaper, they got the same guy. Updated.
You can ask.
How long have I extended?
We listen to your extension.
The last time that happened.
Well, but gee, those ones don't expire, just the report. So he just has to update his for another five years.
That's true. If you're in a residential zone, your actual residential issue definitely expires. It's just.
A report.
So in, in course.
Didn't have to build any.
That's not.
You can get a one extension.
But you actually get that. But the portion of the, um, the geo tech that applies to the geo tech reports doesn't actually expire. It's the geo tech report that expires. So you can actually keep that part of the life.
The actual permit?
Yes.
If you're in residential.
Is that right?
Just like it's your change.
I haven't. Look up his property.
Right, because the use permit you have now for a center dwelling won't allow you to have one until that fourth month. But the portion of it that applies to each dunes is different than the fourth part of it.
Yeah.
Only one, that's what this is on the. And last three weeks, when did we raise it? After two thousand and nineteen? So then you probably need a part, which might be eligible for a wish.
Although looking for the CDP, like, you think they're probably. Four, they should.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't mean to say about this. So supposedly my department was not.
Yeah.
Put on the map. Go around the new one, she agreed it.
So if you're, if you're next to Kent, I don't know how that would be possible. If you had, if you had to do the geo tech report, you were in.
Yeah, if you were geo tech required for a template dwelling, you were in the classification zone in nineteen seventy five maps and the two thousand and twenty four. They didn't, they didn't require geo tech unless you're in it as. So if you did geo tech, you are in. You would have argued. Now, you may have been reclassified from code of terrace one, two, and three. Not in that zone. That's way out. Yep, that sounds good. Thank you for your comments. I really, I appreciate that, guys. Okay, let's do Mark. Come on up, mister. Introduce yourself, give your, uh, address if you would, please.
Uh, Mark?
You can sit down if you.
Hi, my name is Mark Kane. I'm a private landlord on North Bank Lane, eight floor, seven five one, North Bank Lane, Proppilori. Um, it's been a number of years I've been trying to, um, resolve an issue with tide gate and the counter room. And what this hazard thing falls into your mapping is that, obviously, if the tide gate could be replaced, would you guys be involved in that?
Your tide gate and the coconut restory master plan that's applied outside of that.
Outside, so the, the plan department wouldn't have to have.
There would be, there would be a sign off with the flood plain. That you do, and then the, um, the ashtray policy that I'm pretty sure I looked at your before and hoping this all would have to be for the tide gate.
Okay, so what, the problem, okay, I'm, I'm involved with the salmon restoration, I'm involved with the set program. And I'm also involved with the pride and I'm trying to make it, everybody happy. I'm trying to work with Paul Sauer on getting the side gate replaced with a bad accident. Like how happened, shut down. Um, we have another bad winter, that, that's going to be shut down. North Bank's getting closed. I don't know if there's any way the planning department, guys can come up with grant monies or anything. It's like everybody's broke in the world and everybody knows this has to be fixed, but and also the salmon, it's a main estuary for the shrimp salmon up that seven mile creek. And my neighbor and I have been trying to work with everybody to resolve it and make it a, you know, a mainstream again that helps the shrimp salmon to bask. So, and, and they are coming back with the help of the set program and a lot of volunteers. But I, I just thought I would come to slide you guys to see if you have any ideas when you said help and anyway. Yes, um, there, there, there has been some foul play here, um, conflict of interest between my neighbor, which I was involved, um, categorized with. Anyway, um, there's been a lot of money spent. The, um, on tide gates and such up and down the Proppil River, but nothing would be, this tide gate is, should have been number one, they would be repaired. And the, the word was put out there that I was volatile, it wasn't me, it was my neighbor's brother supposedly that ran off on some people. So that needs to get me repaired, that, that conflict of saying that my neighbor and I have bulk or less far from the truth. We're just trying to help and make things right. So.
A little bit out of our ball, it's a little bit out of our jurisdiction. So we could talk.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a little out of our scope, especially on today's stuff, but I see, yeah, tide gate failed.
And I'll talk to Paul later too.
Because it sounds like that's what it's coming down to, is money to do it?
It is money to do it.
There was said grant money that has been accumulated, spent on the Winter Lake project and also that my neighbor just up the road. And that the part who, Ken, Ken Sauer said that they did their projects because, and over ours, because he said, my, I and my neighbor all. And that's far.
That's clearly not the case. Yeah.
So let me, um, talk to Paul too, the, um, how about, now that, um, emergency manager is working off the grants to help.
Awesome. Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. Okay, fantastic. Did we have any other public comment relating to the, uh, current item here, the beaches and dunes overlay amendments? I've seen none. I'll go ahead and post public comment. Thank you for, you folks for coming forward. Participation is appreciated. Okay, what's, what's next here, Jill? So, uh, staff discussion or, excuse me, commissioner discussion?
You think that? I'm a man P. I'm glad they've been updated. Hope that you all get a chance to actually see them on a bigger screen because you can really augur down into those things. And, uh, to the stories of properties are at.
Okay, thank you.
Above and beyond what we're talking. I do want to know how many man pages you have on your. It's a really big one.
Yeah.
So I like the, uh, I always like when we upgrade or update what data sets we can make some informed decisions on.
I would operate.
Yeah, it is tricky, exactly. To, to fellow's point over here, it's not easy to navigate the website, the code and stuff. And that's why we have professionals like staff and we're all volunteers. We do other things in our lives. But we take time to understand this code and drill it down because, you know, we're property owners too and we're developers and we like to build stuff. That's my main job. That's what I do. So that's the whole thing is we're trying to make this easier, not harder for people to build. But at the same time, we got to protect the fish and the air and water and all that too. So that's, that's a big part of it.
Not all of these work, by the way. So hers probably doesn't.
No longer applied to your land because the land has changed. So, and when we looked at the, the quantifiable ships, you know, who went in and who went out, it, there wasn't a, a lot of change in anything that was really going out of the severe areas, that went into the severe areas. So I was glad to see that. And I also really like, um, the recommendation to, um, have the, the geo tech report or the hazard record done early in the process. Because nothing just works to go through all the land use hoops and jump through all of those and then get to the building from that stage and find out that there's this hazard pickup that is going to totally squash your project. And so I really like having that up there. And I do like that you, um, have added the, the types of professionals that can assist you in that because when you needed a specific geo tech, there aren't a lot of geo tech experts. So that, that is good to scare, but you can use other professionals that are, are up on, um, the hazards to prepare the documents. So I, those are the two biggest changes I saw was that number one, the maps will more accurately reflect your properties. And secondly, you guys will hear earlier on, if you have a hazard issue, we'll. And so, um, I, I, I regret that you guys didn't have a chance to study the maps beforehand. I really do regret that. And pardon me says that maybe we shouldn't proceed with this because you guys did not have the opportunity. But we are not actually making a decision tonight. We just hope if we, if we think that this, um, we better act together, we will recommend that we count mission support. And so this is just one step of it. So you'll still have the opportunity, if you want to look at the maps. Do have any questions, to contact staff or to the, the commission actually has a hearing, right? Yeah, so they leave that with you. So that, that goes my. There's a pig on this.
Comments. Uh, I grew up in Curry Camp. Down at Fort Royal Town. And south of there, uh, on Humbug, there's a lot of appeal on the physical instability there. You can see it when you go down the highway. I looked at a piece of property south of Humbug and there's a home that had to be destroyed because it was slipping right off the block. There was a D restriction on it. You couldn't build on it ever again, but it had gone through the process and got a building permit. Uh, but a lot of these safeguards went to place. And so some people lost their home. Result of poor planning and not having the information they needed to make a informed choice to build. But I'm not necessarily in favor of including additional restrictions like some of the comments that we received. But, uh, favor moving forward.
Thank you, Todd. Uh, Matt or Joanne, any comments for you folks online? What's your thoughts on that?
Yeah, no, thank, first of all, thank you everybody for, for coming tonight and, um, and also thank you for our partner from DLCD for coming in, um, presenting it again. Um, I know the last time I really enjoyed the interactive map and being able to kind of see the changes. Um, it also baffles me sometimes when I learn that we're still using nineteen seventy five maps, um, especially in twenty twenty five. But, um, but I, um, when I was looking at it from the standpoint, um, as a housing developer, um, one of the first thoughts were, did we lose any buildable land? And in looking at it, we really didn't. Uh, what we did was we clarified where land was safe to be built at. Um, and so when I talked to people in the community, there really wasn't a big concern about it, aside from it just gave us more science and data to back up where it is safe to build and develop at and, and where we can build more units. So, uh, from, uh, planning commission, um, and from a community planning standpoint, I, I'm in support of this and want to see it go forward.
Thank you, Matt. I, I would echo that too. I don't do a lot of residential development, but I do a lot of commercial and industrial development. And I think it's kind of the same to that. In fact, I think this opens up lands and gives us the opportunity to properly identify opportunities to be developed, uh, rather than let it down. I think this makes it easier for my investors to build golf courses and stuff or whatever they want out there, honestly.
Joanne, any comments?
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we got you. Thank you.
Okay, well, I really appreciate the fact that the, um, the progress of this presentation addresses the current uses of the dunes. It also addresses dunes recreation, the endangerment. It also addresses dunes recreation, the endangered species and wildlife, personal use, preservation of the dunes, and the recommendation regarding foliage and dune stability. It's flexible for construction, development. And I just um looked looked the whole doggone thing over and I think it's a great presentation. Thank you, Rihanna. I think you did a beautiful job. And I don't think Coos County could ask for a better situation. And I love the way you um improved the map. It's awesome. So yes, I'm in.
Thank you very much for your comments. Jill, staff, anything to add?
Um only thing that I did recommend is adding to recommend support is adding that protection for um to match the force.
Say that one more time, sorry.
So we have forest practices under the explosion because farming practice should also be in the explosion. That was. Yes, but that was the thing I should I think you should add in the explosions.
That was going to be my other question too, too. And how does it is would the cranberry farmers move in their sod around or their sand or whatever to make their bogs and all that? Is that doom grading and is that going to restrict that?
Not.
It's farming, right? They're farming cranberries. It's and that's why we have the farm forest covenant protection built in. So these folks aren't, they can go ahead and farm a little, anything way they want to as under current guidelines and not be subjected to the grade.
The exception. Like with a hill. Excluding, you can fill. Probably fifty yards without. But here we're twenty-five yards. Is that arbitrary or who picked that? Thank you.
Um yeah, I think that's.
Oh, she has her hand raised too.
Okay.
Sorry, could you repeat the question?
So in in the exceptions, there it talks about a twenty-five yard uh Philly removal filled area instead of fifty that is made up by DSL. And I was just curious that that came from um the model ordinance. If you have any background on that.
It did come from the model ordinance. Um that is something that we are encouraging uh the twenty-five uh QB guards.
But do you do you have any background of where the twenty-five yards came from? I think that's really true.
I don't. Um I can I can check with my team though and see if we have any background on where that specific number came from and I can send that information to you, Jill.
So you.
I yeah, I would like the consistency of people remember a more lenient be twenty-five yards is literally two dump trucks. That's not much material. And if fifty yards is good enough for the division of state plans, I think we could offer that flexibility in this space.
I like to be aligned with state standards for sure.
True.
Great question, Todd.
I'm looking here on the side of.
Me too. Okay, fantastic. Good conversation. We'll entertain a motion if someone.
Can I? Can I jump in real quick?
Oh, please, Rihanna.
Thank you. Um I just wanted to add a quick clarification on the uh geotech requirement and while that does help fulfill the requirement for the clear and objective standards. Um and so that is another reason why that is one of the the key elements of this.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna, I'll ask you to hold your comments. Uh but happy to chat. Um I was entertaining a motion. If there's no further discussion. It's a recommendation. Do you guys feel any need for continuance?
I I don't, but I'd like assurance to audience members that they have access to staff to. There's a lot of been a lot of distress and I don't want to see people feel like they've been shuffled out the door without answer.
I would tend to agree with that as well. Are we clear that this is going to go in front of a whole nother commission and then not a whole other chance to speak in front of the people that actually make the decision?
Yes.
They've listened to you. Yeah. Yeah.
They listen to both. They listen to the recommendation and the public.
All right, sorry. It's not really a hurry. It's just governmental proceedings. We've just got work to do. The uh the trick is there's. We've studied these maps very carefully for for months. We've really done our homework on this stuff. This is what we do and we do it well. And we, all of us, I'd like to, you know, like I said, we're all property owners and and have a very vested uh in this community to to err on the side of pro-development rather than more restrictions. We, the whole reason I got into this is to make it easier to get template dwellings with my whole this by campaign when I first started here. I want to prove as many of those as I can. Um and ADUs and increased buildability in this town. That's my whole thing. And I think we can all agree that, but.
And I and I agree that there's no hurry and I feel really bad that you all didn't get a chance to look at the maps and have an informed decision and come here with some informed questions. And so I would, I would just throw this out there that we don't make a decision right now to move this forward to the county commissioners or wait until next month's planning permission meeting. Give you all thirty days to figure out how to use your smartphone. Get online.
Yeah.
I'm looking at you.
Yeah.
Me. So and then to come back if you have any really good german input, we want to hear. But you you don't have it informed. You see the half sentence on it because you just received this three by five car. I know a lot of neighbors that didn't and they weren't why I was coming. And now I get a, there's no links on it. So I can see.
Point, Katie.
Is that?
I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
To. To allow the public to.
I would second that motion. It seems appropriate.
I did not hear the motion. Could you repeat the motion, please, Joe?
I would second that motion.
You can't second it.
Chair, chair can't second. I thought I could just make motion.
Which one of the talks was taken?
That one.
Okay, I have a motion by Diana and a second by Todd. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Don't move.
Thank you, guys.
I've got a duly important.
Oh, yeah, please do. It's up. Sure.
There was a fire just a couple of days ago, really bad. It was called in by my neighbor. And it was in a forest area that it could have gotten, you know, if it had been windy, it could have gotten really bad quick. And they had a helicopter on site and they were having to go all the way to the river. The dip and they go back. And we informed them that we had equipment on in the area that we could burn, make a dirt, we had ponds. And they took advantage of what we have, the ponds, and they only had to go like fifty yards. And that saved their ass.
Cool.
So I think in your in your mapping, you guys might want to add into that areas of water access. Because this town has burned down or abandoned it has a couple of times already. And there's a lot of doors as you guys were talking about. So have points of designated areas that they can have the ability to draw that line. That would be huge.
Good suggestion. Mr. Smith, you had your hand up for a minute. Do you have something to add?
Down there in the new river, we're family farmers and some other people in the room. So thank you for the extension. We haven't had a chance to look at the maps. We're about a half mile from the new piece of earth lies. So um it would be good to know where those hazards are or are not. So thank you for the extension.
No problem. And you know where I'm at too. If you want me to sit down with your computer, I'll I'll be happy to sit. Same thing with staff. These these ladies have offered too. If you guys have any questions, you come in, links don't work, come on down. We guys, Monday through Friday, nine to five. Come on in and and I'll make sure you can see what you can need to stick. Fantastic. Sure.
Um I own Randy Hertz, you know, like I said earlier, I have eight nine nine five. Take her below highway, which is close to sunset. This, the card I received was addressed to Spirit Lake Dunkin', Sandy's, and that's Spirit Lake. We also own that. Um and there's two other neighbors out there, um with few ones that own Jordan Lake, Dave's that own um San Point. They didn't receive cards.
Dave's didn't.
It seems like it was sort of spotty. And why didn't, why didn't I get one for eight nine nine five, which does have a hazard? Right there.
If all your properties have this.
They don't. They're all different. But but again, with Sandy's, they didn't.
Yeah, Dave's should have got one.
I know. I'm just saying that.
Yeah, their place is just all a bunch of sand. I know I know their place.
And the same with the.
Yeah, I know both those places. It's just a bunch of sand dunes. Yeah. And I know your hook shooting club too.
Yeah, just.
Thank you.
So we did remove Duke too. About one, about one. Mark that you too. Because I think it started out at over six thousand.
Do you put it in the paper too?
Yes.
Yeah. Got a couple extras. I'll give one to Joe. Yeah. Yeah, if you got an extra one, just give one to Joe. Yeah, that's my buddy too, right? Okay. Okay, fantastic. Uh that closes that item A on the comp plan amendments. Uh planning commission comments. Am I ready to adjourn, Jill? Where am I at my process? Got lost. Got a little bit out of order here. Yeah, exactly. We're we're in election of officers.
Yes. But I was thinking of July. August was just basically the work session. Not everybody was here. We were missing physically here. So so now we need to do a lot of them as officers. So the way you do that is typically a passion, you're right, there is a best. You guys can do whatever you like. Everybody just needs to nominate.
Our vice chair is the service chair.
We're coming out of virus soon pretty quickly.
When would the, when would that start? First of the year or next month? Fantastic. We have the hot seat. Okay, so we've got, we've got a nomination and a.
Uh oh, man. But they have to vote to make a motion and vote for.
No, I wouldn't say.
Oh, yeah, other people.
Okay, so I've got a nomination. I think we should all vote for uh old Matt Burkholtz to move forward as chair going forward for next month. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Don't move. Okay, we need a vice chair as well.
That is the vice chair. Your chair is Todd.
Yeah, yeah. And now we need to vote a vice chair, right?
He mixed up their names. He said Matt, he said Matt and his last name.
So technically, the chair doesn't exist.
He said. Matt. Yes. You voted Matt, but.
Okay, let's go ahead and now take a motion to nominate a vice chair.
I nominate Matt the vice chair.
I would like to second the nomination. If a person would like to hear from Matt, sometimes vice chair has to be chair.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I I would um be willing to do that and commit to being there in person for the meetings going forward. We've got a nomination, a second, and some clarification. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. She had a question.
Oh, yes. Okay, so that is that finish up elections of officers? Let's sneak, Kath. Let's sneak. Uh is it Kathy? Kath, come on up on and introduce yourself and uh give us your address and then take a couple minutes and tell us what's on your mind.
Thank you. Thank you for your work. My name is Kath Collier. Um my address is five five nine oh four Ferry Road. We're just up abandon between the Gulfport and the the Spencer, the little reservoir there. We touched that. And on that piece, I looked at the map. Is that about four hundred feet maybe is a coastal terrace according to the map, but the rest of our place is inland, dunes stabilized, green. I mean, we did try and something, but that's not that's what we do. So when you draw where you want to look at it, it would have been one that was one. I mean, if you're gonna, if it's a majority of the, let's say you have ninety percent of your projects in one, we're gonna go with the ninety percent. We're not gonna take ten percent.
Okay, yeah, the coastal terrace is mainly Blackfaries. We've been getting rid of about four acres of the woods. My other quick thing is um I think it's going to be under forming. Um I put in my original plan back in twenty eighteen. I mean, it's been a long time uh to put in um seven water tanks uh and take water off the roof. And I got a metal roof put on it, designed it so that I could spread water out, rainwater onto the property because it's dry. And when you're thinking twelve acres, I'd like to grow some Christmas trees down there, but I gotta get water to them or else there's not going to be anything happening down there. So I'm thinking that's just part of the forming. Good. Then my last.
Love that idea.
Yeah.
Great idea.
It is, and we have a lot of excess water. You know, we've gone to Australia and seen how they really extract their water and seen some lovely gardens that were maintained with a cuppy cup. and seen some lovely gardens that were maintained with a couple of water. They're really tight on it. In my previous life, I was a webmaster, and I took care of Oregon, Washington, Northern California, about 60 webmasters. And there's two things that you can do for this long URL. You can use something called Bitly, and it will shrink it down to one little code, and then you don't have to remember a lot. People don't have to make errors. And also on your opening page, you can go, what's hot? And put a link right there on your homepage that says, if you're looking for this because it's a hot thing, click here. Don't make them dive through there when they really want to get in there and look at those maps because they really appreciate those maps. I really appreciated what's been going on there and the definitions as well. So I think it's great to work, you know, support.
I wish, I wish we had control over the website.
Thanks, Kath. I appreciate the comment. Thank you.
We used to be on the front page, and we got booted off. The sheriffs did. IT, IT. Yeah.
So we did get a banner. We did do a banner for that. So I have to ask the question. There, but I agree with her. I think there has got to be a better way. I mean, I have so much information on the website. Great information, but if you don't know where to navigate.
I mean, if we needed continuance because the tech wasn't there, I think it'd be who of us to try to at least ask if, you know, put a little banner up that says, here's a link to the new Dooms and Bets. Even just access to that, that map for everything. I mean, like I said, I use it, I use it every single day. Yeah. It is great. All you do, yeah, you click on community development. But to have it right on the dang homepage, it should be under latest news. Yeah, I see you got new hours around.
Sheriff's office took our shot. Yeah. Not gonna argue with them.
Community developed block grant completion for Green and. I mean, they got the 4H budget.
What else we got?
Okay.
The Stanley Grant that we got, got resended. For funding for that.
Yeah.
They don't.
Now it's the update.
So we're going to reapply again in the spring. Hopefully get it. And then, but we did get, and Matt is on there, and I think I talked about this before, but we did get some grant money for, our dollars for urban form. If you have not seen that mapping project, Matt, we need to set that presentation up so that everybody can see it. It's an amazing map tool that you can click and do reports on. And it will give you reports. It'll tell you the zoning. It'll tell you the special development consideration. It will tell you how to find permit history. It'll give you all these things that we already got that in. And then we also have new software that we are working on. We signed an agreement for new software and all that from the beginning instead of a fill-in. So you can do your permit all in one. I am trying to get text amendments done so that this has all that together, allows to do use bundled permits. It cuts out time, increases more efficiencies. How many will save us about 20% of our sap time? It will save us funding. So the state can do, they solve a program for me, it's a statewide program, which you cannot modify. But there means you have to adapt to it and to the credit card processing, started with us, the credit card processing. So it ends up costing us about $25,000 a year, so it's not free. And so, and for us, you have to log out of one Excel and go into another Excel when we do onsite. It's not just a module or something, but actually physically out and back in to set things up. And so we still follow all of that. We're shooting to do live by January 1st. The grant money is that we got, we're hoping to use for some plan software. And we're working with Busei and North Bend on this too, so that we're all in the same system to have this exact platform.
Yeah, stream line things.
The other project that we are also looking at is, we've been talking about council of governments. We use a lot of council of governments here. You know, everybody having shortage, nobody having anybody. So, but we're looking at that primarily to look at housing in a different way and doing more of a regional plan for housing. So our Kusayish Ray management plan is a regional plan, or not regional plan, but it's a jurisdictional plan. And so we were trying to do that with our urban zones and try to match the language with cities in certain zones. So building one zone, it's, you know, it's the same zone, but that way. So those are things that we've been looking at. And then this swing through trains, this swing through trains, we have still pretty new staff. I think I only have one permit specialist. It's actually not probation, so it's still on probation. So it's still the range.
The goal is to have four, though?
Yeah, I never want to train four people ever once.
Yeah. And one's a jailer, right? And bring over one of the. Oh, that's cool. So like my kind of guy.
Or fishing. What he wants to talk to you about. He's great. And then so Bob came from the accessory's office, but she had only been with the accessory's office for like two months. And then she had a real estate background. And then Amanda, when she was in Texas, actually worked for, like, community development. So she has some permitting background. She's the only one so far that's made it off of probation. Probation's a year long. I'm not saying that probation.
I know, learning. What about onsite? How's onsite?
Onsite's going well. Peter has changed his certification now, so that he can go out on his own. He is feeling extremely overwhelmed because of that. I did that at a bad time because it's summertime and waiting to back it all at once.
How backlog are we? Six, six months out?
I don't think it's that bad.
Oh, okay. It's not too bad.
I would say maybe a couple of months. And I think with the new software, it'll help him to perceive that he's had some struggles and stuff in the department. Trying to get reports and all of them.
Oh, it's a hard, that's a hard job.
Yeah, so. That's basically all I have for updates. I'm not sure if I have any professionals. We are working on landslide mapping, and it's actually, there's a portion of it that is tied to roads. So we're trying to do some updates to landslide, the more, a better funding spot for like stipend funding, federal funding, ZASF funding. So we're focusing on our slides, mostly on roads. We can try to get some better mapping and foster developments.
Fantastic. Thank you for the updates. Anything else for the good of the order? Good reading. Again. Sure. What's up, mister?
I actually, in the county, Dan Langley, Dan. Anyway, I thought about 100 acres in Green County. And I've never been to one of your meetings, but I really enjoyed it.
We'll see you again next month.
Main thing is, I didn't want to dig my thing in the middle yesterday. So I called Rick McKinney, and he's a large landlord like me in the south in the Green County, out in the New River area. And he never knew about it, and we'd like, maybe eat on your lips, you know. I mean, because everything we do is Curry County, pretty much, as our main entity. But I'd like to, I mean, your main, just know that.
So fill out a form, and then say request notice at the bottom, and then.
Yeah, because a lot of what you're talking about, really, I need to know about our land. We're all mowers, got a mean high type there.
It's a good idea, too, because even if a lot of it is Curry County stuff, a lot of what we do kind of mirrors other counties. So you see, like, we do, we adopt what Lakewood, Tillamook County does, and then they adopt what we do, and it's you kind of model what happened to those, too, so.
Yeah. They wouldn't leave. So YFW out of Gold Beach, they've got to deal with the feds. I think they're gonna have us seasons when we're here in April, three days on, three days off, try to move them on. Because, you know, each one of these is bringing back five or six hot springs every year, and they know that they're so bad that they just make hay fields out.
Yeah, we do.
And yeah, no, it was really bad. And they're weird. They show up at 9:00 or 10:00, what, clock? I mean, you can set your challenge. And then after they leave our field, they don't see land again until they get to the. And so that's the way that YFW got to where there can be a season that late because they're not following the coast. They're migrating straight in a straight line. They'll make that flight in four to five days, nonstop.
Wow, well, that's why they're chowing down on property.
And they do, they mess up the hayfields, huh?
They need the energy.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'm glad I came.
Yeah, welcome anytime, man. Absolutely. Feel free to balance out some.
Thank you.
Yeah, a lot of application and goodness. All right, thanks, everyone. Thanks, Matt.
Have a great weekend.